I'm gonna start recording.
Recording in progress.
The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for August 12th, 2025 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature this year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through June 2027. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform and is also being live sharing. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in this hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting for the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board proposes to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. So on yes, you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Bedebraza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Okay, and of course, my agenda has Mr. Langham twice because we really want him here, but I believe I should be calling for Mr. Blesz.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. I know. Good morning. The floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the approval for hearing minutes. These are the hearing minutes from July 24th and July 29th, and I will make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have, at the extension schedule for 9:30, there are 18 extensions. I'll try and get through them all correctly. After that, if there are any questions, we can direct those to Madam Chair. We'll begin with case BOA 1247948 with the address of 80 to 104 West Broadway. Then we have case BOA 1396206 with the address of 43 South Brenman Street. Then we have case BOA 1159113 with the address of 693 Cummins Highway. Next, we have case BOA 1459116 with the address of 770 Galton Boulevard. Next, we have case BOA 1338631 with the address of 539553 East Broadway. Then we have case BOA 1035609 with the address of 820820T Morrison Boulevard. Next, we have case BOA 1405496 with the address of 834 East Fourth Street. Then we have case BOA 1405494 with the address of 836 East Fourth Street. Next, we have case BOA 947520 with the address of 121 Brookside Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1337665 with the address of 596 East Seventh Street. Next, we have case BOA 1444863 with the address of 272276 Hyde Park Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 878714 with the address of 72 Dresser Street. Next, we have case BOA 1287036 with the address of 17591763 Washington Street. Next, we have case BOA 1270458 with the address of 525 East Broadway. Next, we have case BOA 1246894 with the address of 135 Dudley Street. Next, we have case BOA 1246900 with the address of 145 Dudley Street. Next, we have case BOA 1291555 with the address of 18 Birchcroft Road. And finally, we have case BOA 1406478 with the address of 84 Park Street. Madam Chair, those are the extensions scheduled for today.
Thank you for reading all those. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
I make a motion to grant the extensions that were requested.
May I have a second?
Act, get going.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have two board final opportunity cases scheduled for 9:30 a.m. I'll ask in a minute, but I believe they were together. That I will read in case BOA 1486207 with the address of 28 Fourth Street. And I will ask Attorney Small if these two cases go together.
Yes, they do, Mrs. Stenbridge.
Then, along with the previous one, there will be case BOA 1501503 with the address of 30 Clifton Street. Thank you for that information, Attorney Small, and would you please respond?
Sure. So, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small of a business address of 51 Dodgson Road. With me today are the owners of the property, Mr. Alec and Mr. Bruce DeSilva. Madam Chair, we are here simply as a housekeeping matter and to clear up the record with regard to this project. This project was originally approved together as six residential units with four parking spaces. And as a result of BPD design review, we still are at six units with the reduction in parking to two spaces as we have increased the open space with the BPD and plans will be submitted as such. So what we're seeking today was just confirmation of the decision, of the original decision for six units and with the changes that were recommended by the Boston Planning Department. I know Jeff Hampton is on it. I don't know if he wants to add anything to that, but we have been in conversations about this with BPD.
Thank you. Happy to hear from Mr. Hampton, if you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. Derek is correct. I think in their BFA request, they said that we were reducing the number of units to four. That may have been lost somewhere along the line. This board never directed us to reduce the number of units. The footprint of the building actually stays the same. So square footage is the same, setbacks, everything is exactly the same. They want to go back to six units as opposed to the two families that they had submitted for design review. We're fine with that, going back to two, three families. Our request was that the plans that we stamped for approval show an increase in open space, a reduction of parking spaces from four to two. So what we just need to do now is gel these two sets of plans together, right? One that shows six units with the reduction of parking and the increase in open space, and we're fine with that. So we're on board with six units on this.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No questions. I had a chance to review the plans and the proposal and it seems permissible.
Any other questions from the board or comments? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next, we have groundwater conservation overlay district case scheduled for 9:30 a.m. The case is BOA 1723649 with the address of 140 Potlum Street. If the applicant stands or the representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Shane Lowes, 1507 Architecture, a business address of 46 Grahamian Way. The proposal is for a addition and conversion from a single family to a two-family, and we're excited for groundwater as we're in the groundwater conservation overlay district. And we are meeting the list of data that the change requirements in terms of the amount of work we're doing. So here is the proposed site plan. See a small addition off the rear of the building, most of the yard in the back stays. If we go to the next slide is the existing site plan. You kind of see we're taking out most. It's a single family now that takes up lot line to lot line and along the whole street front of Potlum. Next slide. If you can keep going. Through the zoning code review, so the next slide. And here, it was just sort of a zoning description sheet. So you can kind of see the areas of the addition on the third floor and off the rear and the outline of the existing building. So right now, it's an existing two-story building, running a third story under the newer East Boston allowances for additions. And then the addition off the rear. Next slide, please. Here we have the existing layout with the basement, first floor and second floor. Next slide. And here we have the proposed basement first floor where they have the lower unit and then the upper. And the next slide, please, shows the upper unit on the second and third floor. We have the existing and proposed final evasions and rear evasions. You can see the addition at the top. Next slide, please. And here we have the left side elevation showing the addition at the top as well, as well as the addition off the rear. And I believe that is within the plans. Like I said, the other violation was for groundwater overlay, which we've had the approvals from Boston Water and Sewer already. So we can take any questions.
Mr. Semenelli, can you confirm?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Card letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Or... Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
You too. Have a good day.
Next, we'll begin, we'll go to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. And at this time, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 a.m. timeframe.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, 100 Huntington Avenue.
So that would be for case, this is for case BOA 1703445 with the address of 100 Huntington Avenue. Would you please go ahead and explain, Attorney Drago?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here today, asking for a short deferral. This was for a decal signage on the exterior of a drawbridge, and we need to meet with the BPDA to go over some design questions, concerns. And I think it's just summer schedules, but I am actively working with Mr. Hampton to schedule that meeting. So if we could get a deferral so we can make that happen.
And how far out are you seeking this?
I guess not far. If there's availability in September.
Caroline.
Get Summer 23.
September, I'm actually, I'm going to be away. That's the day I'm coming home. So one after that would be fine, whatever that may be.
October 7.
Perfect. Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to October the 7.
May I have a second? And Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
I have another as well.
Oh, you do? Okay.
85 Center Street, Ward 11.
So that would be for case BOA 1652945 with the address of 85 Center Street. Go ahead, Attorney Drago.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here, asking for a deferral. We have yet to submit. We will be submitting revised plans and working with the community. We did make changes, so the mailing shouldn't have gone out in the advertisement. So we are asking for a deferral till those plans can be reviewed by the examiner and a new refusal and a new advertisement go out with reflecting those changes.
Okay. Do we have other dates? Any dates, Karen?
We can do October 7 or October 28.
7th would be, you know what, I'm sorry, October 28th, just to be safe, to make sure there's enough time to review everything.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to October 28.
May I have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 a.m. timeframe? Hearing none. We'll move on then to begin with case BOA 1534942 with the address of 10 Brenman Street. If the applicant stands or the representative is present, would they please explain the case report?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and through the members. My name is Richard Lins. I'm the attorney with the business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston on behalf of Tenbrinet LLC, which is the petitioner in this particular matter. Can you jump down to slide two, please, out of the basket? So this involves a pre-existing non-conforming structure which is currently used and occupies an office. Our proposal would be to change the use and occupancy to maintain the office at the ground level and to have three residential levels above for a total of six residential units. This site is located just outside of Maverick Square. And when this was submitted, Madam Chair, which I believe we're getting to the, hopefully, the end of the line here on these legacy filings, but this was submitted prior to the enactment of amendments to Article 53 and therefore, it's been cited, I believe there are a total of 14 violations that have been cited. With the enactment of Article 53 amendments, 12 of those violations get eliminated, which I think speaks volumes about how planning in Boston has worked with predictability as well as the difference between the old zoning and the new zoning. So in this particular case, this is essentially an as of right proposal with the exception of two items. Off-street parking, which is non-existent today on the site, as well as some design elements for the roof deck, which we are proposing. With respect to the only additional item we would require is a conditional use permit under G-Card, which we provided in both letters. If you can jump down a couple of slides further, let's go down to slide 10, please. Yeah, this is a good place to start. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, the existing building that sits on the site pretty much occupies the entire site, which is one of the reasons why many of the dimensional violations that would have been cited under the old Article 53 version have been eliminated. As this board is aware, changes to Article 53 allow for expansion of existing buildings such as this vertically within the existing footprint. So even though we don't need rear, front, or side setbacks currently, we're permitted to increase the height of the building, which is what we're proposing here, provided that we don't make those setbacks any worse. In this particular case, the height that's now allowable in the district is four stories, 50 feet. We are at four stories just below 50 feet, even as measuring all the way up to the headhouse. Go to the next slide, please. So just showing our proposed conditions, we do actually allow for some setbacks as we move up the building vertically, and we can show those in the elevations when we get to those. With respect to the roof deck, I do note that the roof structural restrictions for East Boston do have some setback requirements. All of those are easily capable of being complied with. I think we can address any of those issues in design review should the board grant the relief that we're requesting. I do note that the Boston Planning Department's recommendation was for approval with design review, especially with respect to the roof decks and certainly the adjustments that may be necessary in order to achieve better compliance. Next slide, please. These are just existing conditions. I'll go right to slide 14 in the interest of time, just to look at the floor plans. So 14, Madam Chair, members of the board, shows the basement level. We're not proposing any programming other than utility and other typical mechanicals that would be found to serve the building. Towards the middle of the page shows the ground level, which would be the existing commercial space which will remain. And then we get up to level two, which would be converted to two residential units back to front. Next slide, please. We show the next two levels, which would be the addition on top of the existing building. And then we show the roof plan with the two means of egress heading out to the roof deck itself. If you can go to the next slide, please. Sure. So our elevations here, as I indicated, maximum height is four stories, 50 feet under the amended zoning, which is precisely what we've accomplished here with the design. We are below 50 feet when looking at the, I believe it's the top of the headhouse. Actually, the roof rafter is above 50 feet. Headhouses don't necessarily count towards height, although I can't really see if we can zoom in. It's like we're right around the 50-foot mark with the headhouse itself. So just looking at front and rear elevations, as I indicated, we do have some setback that we did incorporate to the rear, allowing those openings and windows. Next slide, please. Just looking at our right side elevation, because we do have sufficient setback on the right side of the building, we're able to incorporate those openings and windows, which allows for sufficient light, air, et cetera, for those residential units. You can see as we get up to that top level towards the rear, which is the screen right, we do have a pretty good setback of that level as well. And we probably show the same in the next slide, which would be the left side elevation. So left side is online with the adjoining property. We do illustrate the outline of the property next to us. We are not incorporating any windows or openings on this side of the building based upon our practical lot line. Again, you can see the setbacks as we move up the building to screen left. Next slide, please. Just some attempts at context rendering to show how this building would fit in context with the streetscape. And once again, with the amendments to Article 53 and re-designation of this area under UGA4, the norm for height is up to four stories along this corridor, possibly higher if these are subject to C-Drive requirements as well. As I indicated, the only relief that is applicable at this time is the off-street parking requirements. We would be required to add six parking spaces for the six residential units to be proposed. However, this property would not be conducive to adding either garage in the ground level or adding off-street parking anywhere on the site. Keeping the commercial space at the ground level also serves the purpose of keeping activation for the building. I'll pause there, Madam Chair, and answer any questions on the board behalf.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Hearing done. May I have public testimony? Mr. Semenelli.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Card letters from them.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding 10 Brenman Street. Our office differs with the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including on a buttered speeding held on 5/22/25 that was attended by two community members who did not provide any feedback. The proposal was also reviewed by the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association about a year ago. The civic association expressed support at the time and did not wish to meet with the applicant again since the time had lapsed. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you everybody for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't have additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that the project undergoes BPDA design review and pay special attention to the material and to the material of the exterior, given that this is the first kind of four-story within that block. Although we do see four stories, maybe two or three blocks down, it's important that the BPD does design review for this new four-story within this block.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case DOA 1710785 with the address of 22 Monument Square. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain through the board?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Sweeney, I'm an attorney in 261 Main Street, Charles Town, and I represent Kate and Rob Murphy, who are the owners of the property here at 22 Monument Square. We're here today, members of the board, to legalize a long-existing parking space. As you're looking at the plan now, you see Monument Street. This building is at the corner of Monument Square and Monument Street. There's been a curb cut and a parking space back there for well over 40 years. The potty's bought the unit at the time. With this blocking, however, they realized just recently that it was never legalized before this move. We've had no opposition, there's no work, no changes are necessary, and as I indicated, the entrance is well over 100 feet off Monument Square.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to each appetizer in a 300-foot radius which solicited no comments to our office. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other race hands?
No, Madam Chair, with a hundred comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Stand a second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes?
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
The next case is deferred, so we will go on to case DOA 1723832 with the address of 1260 Boylston Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, board members. My name's Daniel Brennan, permit and licensed consultant for Wonder in the Boston area, joined here with Jason Botcher, associate director from Wonder, who will hopefully briefly share a presentation. I didn't realize our presentation slides didn't make it into the filing. I'm not sure if it's possible if we can still share on screen.
We don't share screen.
Okay. So I'll just keep going with my description then. Wonder, Wonder is a new takeout restaurant proposed at 1260 Boylston Street. It's the Bond building, and it would be a first-generation tenant. Our space would be on the ground level next to Horala Guys and Big Top Chicken. Our space is mostly takeout, would have six seats and a stand-up counter. Because our square footage is just over 2,500 square feet, the use is conditional and requires more of a film relief, our square footage is just over 3,000 square feet, 3,019 square feet. We do have, I'm sorry, let me just look at the slides that we have here. So this is our layout here. It's just over 3,000 square feet. The Boylston Street side is on the right. Maybe if I could turn it over to Jason now, just to give you a little bit of context of what Wonder is and the operation. Jason, you available? Where's the elevator as a panelist, Jason Botcher?
Is this D.C.? Dan, do you see him?
I'm looking for him right now. He's been in here.
Okay.
Yeah, he's in here.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Well, thank you guys for taking the time. What I'll do is I'll just give you a quick high level of who we are, since we are a newcomer up in Boston. So Wonder is a new concept, a new QSR, that is forging its own path in the market. We approach the business quite differently, in the industry quite differently. What we do is we partner with chefs and restaurants from across the country and reproduce their cuisines using our production and our cooking techniques. When I say we partner with chefs and restaurants, that includes quite a few names I think that you guys would be familiar with. Bobby Flay, for example, Jose Andres, Michael Simon are some of our named partners that we work with, and as well as best-in-class restaurants across any number of cuisines. So Tejas Barbecue out of Texas, for example, Chai Panee, which is award-winning Indian street food out of North Carolina, De Far Pizza out of New York. I shouldn't mention New York, this is a Boston hearing. But, and what we do is reproduce, like I said, their cuisines using our techniques. And based on the R&amp;D and the culinary engineering that we've put into our business, what we can do is place any number of different partners out of one retail location. Now, this space in particular is about 3,000 square feet, 3,100 square feet, give or take, which is why we're here, like Dan mentioned. If we were about 500 square feet smaller, this wouldn't have required a conditional use approval from the board. But given that we are here, I'm excited to, I wish I could share the renderings, unfortunately. Dan, did you mention that you shot over the deck a few minutes ago?
I did share it with Stephanie, but I don't know if it's too late.
It's all good. So what we are proposing here is a new retail storefront, essentially, for Wonder. And this would be our first in Boston proper. Our front of house, like Dan mentioned, would include about six seats that are from two, three two-tops. And based on some of the comments we have received from the FCA, that stand-up counter that Dan had mentioned, we are going to convert to include a bar height seating for our patrons. Dan mentioned we are, to a certain extent, takeout-focused. About 55% of our orders are delivery. The balance is either pickup or dine-in. And this location on Boylston is really the perfect type of site that we look for for an urban location. It's close to the mass transit, obviously, it's a growing and redeveloping neighborhood, which is great for us, and just really excited to get up in Boston at this point. We're looking to open about 15 or so locations in the general Boston area in 2026. So this will hopefully be the first with your approval in Boston proper.
Are there questions from the board?
One quick question, Madam Chair. Sorry, I missed the statistic of what the percentage is for takeout. Can you say that again?
Sure. So about 55% of orders are delivery in these urban markets, such as New York City or Boston. And about 45%, the balance, would be either pickup or dine-in.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. So you said, set the percentage of takeout and delivery. Do you plan to rely on, like, apps to deliver the food, or are you going to do it in-house?
Yeah, so, so Wonder has its own app, and about 75% of our orders come through Wonder's proprietary app, but we are also available on third-party apps like Uber Eats, or DoorDash, or any number of third-party apps.
Great, thank you. And also, do you have a plan to facilitate, like, delivery drivers or anything around your restaurant?
Yeah, so we have a number of ways that we can provide information to couriers, specifically for those couriers that are associated with orders that come through the Wonder app. And that's all informational in terms of, you know, where they can pick up, the most efficient way for them to pick up, so that we can properly manage the curbside. And then beyond that, we have other needs of managing deliveries by delaying when orders get kicked out to third-party couriers or to any orders that were placed through the Wonder app, so that we can mitigate the number of couriers that are coming to the site at any given time.
And do you have any, off the top of your head, do you have any, can you share with us any of the logistics around mitigating, like, the curbside there?
Yeah, sure. So, one of the means that we are able to do that is limiting how many couriers get dispatched to a site at any given time. So we can cap the number that get brought to the site, no matter how many orders we might have in queue. So that's one of the ways that we are able to do it. Furthermore, delaying when an order gets sent out to a courier is another means, and that is so that couriers aren't queuing or waiting for an order to be ready. They don't get, it's not like somebody places an order, it automatically gets sent out to a courier, and then they're getting to the location 15 minutes before it's ready for pickup. When we delay that order out to the courier, that means they're only arriving a few minutes ahead of that order being ready, so that they're not, there's not excessive queuing or waiting for an order.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I ask you what you mean by courier? Is that your in-house versus the third-party apps?
So, either way, they're all independent contractors. So whether it's ordered through the Wonder app or directly through a third-party app. So I just refer to all the delivery drivers as couriers, as standard practice.
But when you say you can delay or, you know, take specific measures, who does that apply to? The folks ordering through the Wonder app or the third-party?
Sure, that would be the 75% of orders that we get through the Wonder app.
So the app only?
Yeah. So with that, the good thing is we've made some changes to our model from a business side, where we've eliminated delivery fees, for example, and this is a way for us to convert more customers to the Wonder app. And so we expect that 75% to increase. You know, do we get introduced to new customers through third-party apps? 100%. But we do a great job from a marketing and a brand perspective of converting them to ours.
And given your location on Boylston, where exactly are you expecting people to queue up? Do you actually have any area, or are they just stopping in front of Boylston Street?
Yeah, so there's several bike racks on Boylston here. There is a bike lane right off the curbside. And given the projected order volumes here, we don't expect there to be excessive queuing, but they would enter through the front.
Can I hear from Mr. Hampton? Are you available?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. As you saw, we recommend a denial without prejudice on this. You know, this was something, if this were an existing restaurant that was looking to put in takeout, we'd be in support of it. Our major concern here is with the continuing Fenway transportation access plan, action plan, rather, ongoing, and the amount of volume that this kind of use is going to generate. We have some serious concerns about traffic along Boylston Street, especially queuing right there in front of the building. So for those reasons, we recommend a denial without prejudice.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question regarding your demographics. What's usually your demographics in regards to, like, age?
So, we certainly don't discriminate, that's for sure, but generally, that target demographic is going to be young professionals, up through, you know, more folks my age. So, and then beyond.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I ask is because you do have a large kind of residential building right there, and so I can see that as an amenity.
Yeah.
You know, in regards to the five existing vacant commercial ground spaces, I'd rather see a space being occupied than continuing with the vacancies of the ground floor. In regards to congestion, I don't think a business should be kind of punished for our larger infrastructural issues that the city is facing, you know. I think there needs to be improvement there. And, you know, there are a lot of professionals around the area, so I can see this being kind of an asset, and I think Boston should be a welcoming place for entrepreneurship and kind of successful models. That's my feedback. Thanks.
Thank you. And if the board would allow, I have a few additional comments to follow up on that. So, we do limit our, excuse me.
Please be brief, share something.
Sure. So yeah, we do limit our delivery rate to really 12 to 15 minutes, which means we're not servicing the entirety of Boston or the, out of this location. We will have other locations, either just outside of the city proper or within Boston itself. And beyond that, we can't control, while we can't control the type of vehicle that couriers use in this type of environment with the available infrastructure that the city has put in place for bikes, we expect that it wouldn't necessarily be vehicular couriers, it would be bikes. So in terms of congestion, I don't really foresee that being an issue. And then order volumes, I know there's some hangover from some applications that have come through the board in the past. Our order volumes are certainly not going to be anything that would be intrusive in this case.
Can I just ask one other follow-up question? How many are you, would you be employing in, you know, in the city of Boston or Massachusetts in regards to staffing?
So for each location, general hiring is going to be anywhere from 30 to 40 employees. During peak, we would see about 13 employees onsite, and that doesn't include any third-party couriers or independent contractors.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just, once again, what are your hours of operation?
So we provide lunch and dinner service, so we open about 10:30 in the morning and close at about 10 at night.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the community process, and as a result of the finality of community process, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services is opposed to this application. Our office hosted an appetizers meeting on May 29th, at which no comments were made. The Fenway Civic Association is the active civic group in this area. They're opposed to the application due to the ghost kitchen-like operation with limited focus on dining eating, as evidenced by the small amount of square footage devoted to in-store dining despite its high foot traffic location. The location is in a part of Boylston Street that experiences high traffic gridlock due to the direct proximity to Fenway Park, and a concept that is based primarily on utilizing delivery couriers would exacerbate this issue. Our office shares these concerns, and ONS urges the board to deny this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Jacqueline, please.
Hey, how you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you attest by yourself? Can you attest for the record?
I'm Jaquale Jones. I live at 1260 Boylston Street, the building that's right above this project. I just wanted to raise my concerns, because like, as a person that lives in this building, I see a lot of the scooter drivers that are like going up and down like the bike lane, which like generally causes me a lot of concern, but something that isn't often mentioned about our building is that there's a lot of medical stays. So we have a lot of like medical vehicles that are picking people up using like that same space, and I often see like close collisions in those situations. And I just feel like if there was another restaurant specifically for takeout, it's just going to increase that likelihood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have Lily.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Lily, I'm with Councilor Sharon Durkin's office. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. As Siggy said, FCA has raised some really good points that we think need to be addressed, and he outlined those perfectly. But also, at the same time, we feel the proponent did make a few good faith efforts to reach out to them and connect with them about them, and they were not able to do that. So for that reason, we'd like to defer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Brown.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matt Brown. I'm actually a representative for the property owner of 1260 Boylston Street. As the property owner, we are fully supportive of this proposal. Our building already hosts several retail establishments, including two other dining options, and we believe this addition would complement them well. The loading and delivery of the food and product and supplies would be in compliance with the TOPUS signed by the developer, and our existing retail establishments are following this procedure. The building is also home to 451 residential units whose residents would welcome and support this new this new offlane as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no additional comments.
Any other questions from the board? They have a motion.
I'll make a, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry. Motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second and just kind of explain, you know, I think, you know, I think the BPA is right that, you know, this will cause adverse traffic impacts. I think it's due largely to the model of this business. It's kind of focused on delivery, high turnover, the production, the delivery model, which just makes me think this isn't the right location for this type of use, but perhaps they could find somewhere else in the city.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Stemberich.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
No, because my opinion is that any business that comes to the area, any business that uses that space is going to create a traffic impact. And I think this is for the city to create a traffic study that improves traffic in the area, not for one individual business to assume the consequences of this. Any business that's coming to the location is going to create an impact. I don't think this is for the business owner to solve the traffic problem in the areas, for the city to create a traffic plan that improves traffic for everyone in the area. So for that reason, I would vote no.
Ms. Turner. Ms. Valencia, I have a little more. Ms. Betterbraza.
I vote no for the reasons that Mr. Valencia just quoted. And I do think with the struggles of the business in downtown area, this would be a welcoming kind of opportunity to turn that vacancy to occupation of the ground floor. Thanks.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes no, but the motion does not carry. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich. Ms. Weewell.
No.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
No.
The chair votes no, the motion does not carry. We are at a stalemate. Is Caroline here?
Yes. Madam Chair, you could either do a motion to defer or a motion for denial at this point.
Okay. Is there another motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Before I vote, I just want clarity. Is the motion to defer to come back at a later time?
Correct.
For us to vote on the same issues? So you're thinking that you're going to have a different outcome just because of potentially different board members sitting on the board? Is that the possibility?
That's a possibility. Otherwise, it's a denial and they'd have to wait another year to try again. It's at the discretion of the board.
It's the, yes, thank you.
I'm going to say no to defer.
Is Caroline?
Let me ask you this, Caroline. In this case, can the proponent make changes before they come back or they have to come back with the same proposal?
No, so they could make changes and come back if they defer, but if it was a denial, they'd have to wait another year.
Okay. Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Do we have a date, Stephanie?
You can do October 7th on 28th.
Does the applicant have a preference?
On the 7th, please.
Okay. We'll see you then.
Can we make a, can we make a recommendation to the applicant that what you heard in terms of the concerns that you come before us with new information, new support, talk to VTD? Thanks.
Yes, absolutely.
Do I add on, maybe perhaps consider more seating inside?
Absolutely.
Great point, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1660636 with the address of 202 West First Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please respond to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Quotey, Miller, and Hanley. If, Mr. Ambassador, if you have, you could just leave on this screen really quickly. Here on behalf of First Street Distillers LLC, who's the applicant, Jack Marty, Bill Caravori, and their group Wild Life Hospitality. They are the T, you can see here behind Beehive Restaurant, which opened in 2007 in the South End, Cosmica, which opened in 2020 in the South End, as well as Spy Bar. And with me today as well from Rhodey Architects is Mike De La Fave. And what you'll see in this presentation is they are proposing really an exciting new hospitality concept with an adaptive reuse and renovation of existing industrial buildings on this site at 202 West First in South Boston. Next slide, please. This is just a site plan to orient you. The site is in red, approximately 14,000 square feet. It's located at the corner of West First and C Street. It's just south of Cypress Street and the Menino Convention Center. It is located in the First Street Industrial Local Subdistrict. The immediate area is mostly industrial buildings, but there's also a lot of multifamily residential on the other side of West First as you kind of transition into the South Boston neighborhood. Next slide, please. Just to show you the site, this is the existing conditions. What's being proposed is an adaptive reuse of the AmRamp buildings, which you can see here in various points of view, including in blue in the top right. And that, this was a mobility equipment supply for a building. And while the existing structures will be combined, a lot of this will be cleaned up, repointed, painted, et cetera, for the new use, but all of the buildings will remain as is. There's no proposed addition or anything like that. And you can see there are actually three separate two-story commercial buildings with pretty distinct facades. And then you'll also see there's an open area on C Street, which we'll be proposing to accommodate some outdoor patio space for the hospitality concept. Next slide. A lot of words here, but in essence, these are great operators, lots here in the city, specifically the South End, working in dense residential neighborhoods with no issues, working with the surrounding neighborhood for, you know, 18-plus years to really become even a treasure. And what's being proposed is really a unique hospitality concept, something that's meant to embody the spirit of selfie, combining a lively vibe, distinct character, really tailored for an adult sophisticated crowd, folks who will appreciate fine food, exceptional handcrafted drinks, really great music, which is a component of this, so for really a curated experience. And it's meant to be a social hub for, and a meeting place for all ages and patrons really want to become a cornerstone for the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And just a little bit more on that, you know, really looking to target a diverse range of people from all over the neighborhood and demographics. This is an area that's, you know, currently transitioning from previous industrial uses and the thought here is to offer a new destination for the neighborhood, for residents of South Boston where there are currently really no restaurants. The area, again, has many multifamily buildings, but really no great places to gather and the closest restaurants and entertainment spaces probably a few blocks away on West Broadway. So the idea here is to have components that will attract a wide variety of people, a brewery, a distillery, a winery, a bar, and a great restaurant, outdoor patio space, live entertainment to accompany that, and some local retail for merchandise from these uses. Next slide. Very quickly on this one, this is just to give kind of a mood board, I guess, or a concept, or an idea of what, this is again, industrial building, so what the adaptive reuse could look like. It's very tall ceilings, it's mostly two stories open to the second floor with a small mezzanine level. And the idea is really to, you know, bring this Beehive-type vibe that they've had for 18 years in the South End to South Boston. Next slide. And this is probably the most illustrative one. Again, just showing you what is being proposed. On the right side is the first level and then you can see on the left side, there's kind of a half mezz level, but most of the restaurant area is actually open to the second floor. You can see there's the arrow on the right, which shows you the primary entry on C Street and that is through the white area there that's going to be the outdoor patio. Then you enter into the restaurant where there will be a restaurant and bar and then in blue on the right side, that rectangle is where the live entertainment stage would be. You've got back of house on the left side as well. And then in that green space, separate, that's a separate building. The idea is for that to be the brewery, distillery space in its separate building area. Also along the C, you can see that retail space in orange just off of West First, but the idea here is for the primary entry to be off of C Street, again, away from the residential area on West First and into the neighborhood. It tucked behind a few of the existing buildings to really buffer any sound, noise, visibility of any folks entering the restaurant. And then on the mezz level on the left side of the screen, again, it's sort of a smaller area, but there will be in pink another kind of bar and dining area, potentially for private events, as well as some more back of house to service that area. And then the last thing I'll note is you'll see the gray rectangle on the lower left right at the corner. That's not in the scope right now there. They do all, they do have access to that, but the idea is to, for now, save it for potential growth and future use in operations, just to see when they open, what it could be used for. Next slide, please. So just to refuse the letter, Madam Ambassador, if you scroll down just a little, yeah, perfect. You can see all uses, no dimensional relief or parking relief is required. We do need it for the bar with live entertainment, the restaurant with live entertainment, the local retail, the outdoor patio. This area is zoned and industrial, so the maker space, the brewery, distillery, winery actually is all allowed uses or are all allowed uses, but no change to the existing building footprint, so really a true adaptive reuse. I will note here, despite all the use requirements, we did get a planning recommendation of approval and this would go through because it involves alcohol and live entertainment. We would have to go through the Boston Licensing Board in the state for approval for the liquor licensing and to Mocal for live entertainment. So this is just for the zoning to put those in place, but there will be other agencies and departments in the city looking at this. Next slide, just a few more. This is just pictures to show you some, kind of some renderings that Rhodey put together. This is looking southwest down C Street. You can see that blue building on the left, that brick building, which will house the maker space, the brewery, distillery space, and then that really kind of nice outdoor patio tucked between the buildings, but the main entrance through that patio, again, provides ability for people to have some outdoor space, which is so important in the city, as well as the ability, really, we don't expect any queuing or lining up at all, but if there was a few folks waiting, this would be on our own property and not on the public sidewalk. Next slide is just a straight-on view. That would be the main entrance right there, again, through the patio and entering into the main restaurant, the bar area, which would be in the silver-cladded building there directly ahead. And I think that's the last slide. If you want to, yeah, this is just to show you again the area. I will just wrap up, Madam Chair, by saying we did have extensive communication with the St. Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association. We did hold in a butters meeting, which I'm sure the Mayor's Office will speak to on May 28th. It was lightly attended and I'll, again, I'll just note the planning recommendation of approval for the, for the concept. So happy to stop here and you can answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing done, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on May 28th at which some concerns were raised about the outdoor aspects of the proposed use related to noise, as well as the size and capacity of the restaurant, associated noise issues. There was also concern about the potential exposure of pollutants due to the historical use of the site as an industrial parcel. Meeting was lightly attended. The St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association is the active civic group in this area, which chose to take no position on the proposal. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairs and members of the board. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and work with neighbors and civic organizations. Hearing respectfully asked, that the proponent continue to work closely the South Boston community on inequality of life and neighborhood concerns. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, we don't have a additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Now the second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1676246 with the address of 598 R East 7th Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please respond to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stemberich. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maransky, business address of 168 H Street, First Floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner, Reggie Woods, and as well as the project architect, Jacob Levine. This proposal seeks to combine two parcels, change occupancy from a single-family dwelling to a three-family building by way of a rare vertical addition on a newly created lot of approximately 3,154 square feet. The lot requires relief for insufficient additional lot area as the code requires 4,000 square feet with this unit count. However, the proposed lot area is consistent with the neighborhood's character, that there are many other properties in this area with similar lots that surpass those lot requirements. This proposal falls within an MFR sub-district. Madam Ambassador, if I could direct your attention to page A 1.0 of the drawings. Yes, right there. Thank you. The existing structure will contain unit number one, which will be a bi-level, approximately 1,300 square feet, a three-bedroom. Units two and three will be located within the addition. Unit two located on the first floor being a two-bedroom containing approximately 1,015 square feet. Unit three will be located on the second floor being a two-bedroom containing approximately 1,110 square feet. We have additional violations for front yard setback. Five feet is required by the code. The existing front yard is zero feet and the proposed addition has a front yard of approximately 4.2 feet, which is an expansion of a pre-existing nonconformity. We have a rear yard setback violation. The rear yard requirement is 15 feet as this proposal falls within the shallow lot exception. The existing rear yard is approximately two feet and the proposed addition has a rear yard of 3.2 feet, which is also an expansion of a pre-existing nonconformity. We've also, very familiar with the planning department's recommendation, and again, if this was approved, this rear yard setback could be looked at and viewed during design review. We further have an off-street parking violation. The proposal is aligned with the Mayor's Initiative for Reducing Dependency on Private Vehicles, as this proposal does not provide any parking. Further, it is a two-minute walk to a bus stop and aligned with the Boston Transportation Department's Parking Maxima Ratio Guidelines for this neighborhood. Location of the main entrance is another violation, since the location of the main entrance is faces the sidewalk line, we've been cited for this dimensional relief. However, this is also a pre-existing entry. In concluding, this proposal will contribute to the city's goals for increased housing production and also enhance the life safety of the structure as the building will be fully sprinkled. And again, this proposal is consistent with the planning department's recommendation of approval. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over for any questions or comments.
Thank you. So can you clarify with me, are there any other buildings in that vicinity? So can you clarify with me, are there any other buildings in that vicinity with a similar situation?
Yes, so it is a very common to have buildings that are, that are landlocked, that do have accessway through narrow passageways. Again, it's nothing that's not consistent with the neighborhood, and I believe the Planning Department's recommendation even highlights that as such as well.
But can you name one that's nearby?
I don't have any specific addresses, but, you know, growing up in South Boston, I know the area very familiar, that I've seen circumstances. I recently had one that was very similar, approved to this, probably within the last two years by this board as well. And that was on the other side of East Broadway.
Okay, are there other questions from the board?
Um, yes, I have a question. Can you, can you just walk us through what the backyard is looking like?
Sure, that would be on the site plan, so that's going to go up a little bit further. So Jacob is here as well. Jacob, I believe he should be escalated as a panelist under St. Haas.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Jacob Levine. I'm the project architect for the project. And I'd be happy to kind of walk you through and help answer some questions. If you could go to the second page of the PDF. And on the right side there is our certified plot plan. So, you know, it's, it's an L-shaped lot, so it's a little bit unique. What you see on the left side is essentially the existing house, but we're keeping in the same layout. So there's primarily, I would call it almost a front yard there. And then the building that you see attached is our new proposal. So we get a side yard, or if you wanted to call it the rear yard there, at almost ten feet, it's nine and a half feet on the right side. And then the existing house is really tight on the north setback. We're actually jogging in the new addition to allow a little bit more room to work around. But a majority of the landscaping area would be in the front of the existing house, as it stays today. And then on the right side, plant right of the proposed addition. So that's essentially how the plot plan and the site plan work.
Yeah, and again, Ms. Turner, if, if the, this also could be further reviewed during design review of increasing those setbacks as well.
Thank you. You know, are there other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on December 19th of 2024, where nine butters expressed opposition to the proposal due to lack of parking and density relating to the number of proposed bedrooms. A butters felt that the jump in density was too extreme for a single-family home and was not contextual. Our office has received two letters of opposition that have been forwarded to the board. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is the active civic group in this area. The proposal was presented to them, and their membership voted to oppose. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura here, I forgot to mention my name in the previous comment. Please note, Council of Flame sent an opposition letter to the board yesterday, due to concerns of public safety for neighbors and any bothers throughout the community process. Neighbors highlighted difficulties for first responders to access the site in the event of an emergency, due to it being located down a narrow alleyway in between residents on E 7th Street and E 6th Street. Given the inability of first responders to reach the site, there are potential public safety issues and risk for new residents and existing properties nearby on E 7th and E 6th. Council of Flame respectfully requests that the board take these public concerns seriously and unite its proposal and request a Sony leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Collins' office?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Donald, members of the board. Brian Hurley here, on behalf of Senator Nick Collins' office. We wish to state for the record our strong opposition to the proposed project at 598R East 7th. Over the past several weeks and months, we have heard from neighbors and butters who are deeply concerned about the impact this proposal would have on the character, safety, and quality of life in the community. We have received numerous calls and emails from residents expressing these concerns in a petition opposing the project, as been signed by more than 100 members of this community. As for these reasons, we wish to be on record in support of the neighbors and the butters' position in opposition of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have M. Pelton, please.
Hello there, I'm hoping I can be heard. Thank you very, very much. I am in a butter.
Your name and address, please.
Excuse me?
Your name and your address, please.
Oh, okay. Margaret Pelton. I'm in a butter. I live at 604 East 7th Street. And we submitted not only the signatures, but I also submitted in a PDF file, really outlining the compressed area of where Mr. Woods would like to extend onto the home. His legal address is 598R. That is a three-foot passage, which I did outline in my PDF that I submitted, that is between 596 and 598. The big gap that you might see belongs to my neighbor, which is 602, and that is his driveway. So Mr. Wood has no legal access, according to our deeds. Let's say he has a right to come up that driveway. And it's, I'm hoping you've reviewed, behind our homes of 602 to 614, there is an eight-foot passageway. Now, that eight-foot passageway, we all own eight feet from our back gates to the three lots that are back there. That is all ours. It is not a free man land back there. And when, during the community meetings, we asked, how are you going to get trucks back there? How are you going to get any, you know, excavators? Things like that? And we were told, oh, we'll carry them in, or above that, over what, three feet? Yes, we understand that house has been there for a very long time, as mine has also. But are we actually going to bring more issues with fire safety, things like that? So I just, you know, we outlined it in the emails that we sent, and of course, our picture book that we submitted. And we are asking for the committee to please look at this very, very seriously and appreciate the time that you're going to be.
Thank you, ma'am. So that's, that's a great segue. Can, can the applicant kind of talk through, yeah, because I was looking to figure out where you're actually accessing, on the left or the right?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, so I just, there's a couple-
Please clarify the ownership as given.
So I just do want to clear up a couple of things. So there is a, there's a passageway on the left-hand side that we do have full legal access that's described in all the deeds. Then there's the one that it's Pelton speaking about is an eight-foot passageway. So just want to clarify a couple of things. You know, it becomes more of a legal issue when discussing this, is that, does the applicant have any sort of legal rights or any sort of necessity by an easement? And the question is, again, that becomes more of a legal dispute. What she's discussing about is her neighbor's parking. And despite the fact that it may be within a deed, there is no legal use of premises to allow for that parking spot, on record with Inspectorial Services Department. So again, there is no legal right for that applicant to even have his pocket, despite, again, what's, what's registered in the deed. What I also want to hit is, I know a lot of the issues that we heard is more or less about public safety. Again, if this project is approved, there isn't, I just want to highlight again, just to remind everybody, there is an existing single-family structure there that's, that's being preserved. As far as life safety enhancements, this building and the, and the existing structure will be fully sprinkled, which again, will provide, you know, better life enhancement, safety protections there. And then what I also lastly have to mention, I'm sure Mr. Stembridge can confirm, we do have letters of support that were submitted, and one being from one of the immediate director butters from 590, what, 5967 as well. So again, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
So sorry, another quick question. So which, how, how are those residents accessing their unit? Are they walking through the left side that you said you have, that's currently?
Correct, currently, yes, yes, currently, yes.
Other question, any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have. What, how do, how are you going to provide access to that rear lot, to construction vehicles?
So, I mean, that's a good question of getting that back there. Again, you know, there is policies with the city of Boston that allow you to cross over neighbors' properties in order to do it, and again-
Do you have access from your neighbors to, to do that?
Again, that would, if, if approved, that, that would have to be a conversation that they would have to have together. And again, it applied, comprehensive construction management plan will have to be submitted to Inspectorial Services Department and approved prior to any sort of construction being performed.
Yeah, but you typically need approval from your neighbors to cross through their yard?
Not necessarily. There, there are ordinances with the city of Boston in that means and necessity that they allow you to access it. And again, proper insurance limits will have to be required to be pulled on these properties if, in fact, it is damaged at all whatsoever, that would have to restore it to its original condition or in a much better condition.
Okay. Do you have support from your director butters? So you have-
That's what it is. You've heard some, some of the director butters today in, in opposition. Again, and there has been letters, I'm sure Mr. Stembridge can, can confirm those letters that were sent in through directly from these neighbors. I'm not quite sure how many, because I didn't have-
You don't have it on record?
I, I didn't-
Director butters who will support the project and who-
Yeah, so five, I can tell you right now, 594, because I've seen that letter, 594 through 596, who is the same owner, has submitted a letter of support on there, that I'm sure, again, Mr. Stembridge can establish that there is, that has been received to it.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion? I'm looking for a motion from the board.
Actually, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval, with the claim from the planning department, express attention to the sign to the backyard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Um, yes.
Ms. Better Brazel?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, due to the high numbers of opposition of the neighbors, and also due to the major impact that it would have on neighbors to access the site for construction.
Mr. Langham?
I'm gonna have to vote no.
Chair also votes no, the motion does not carry. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge? Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1672787, with the address of 72 Buttonwood Street. If the applicant had or they're representative of the president, would they please explain to the board?
Anyone here from 72 Buttonwood?
These are- Abraham Alvarez, and Indira Alvarez, I think this is your case. I just sent you an invitation.
Hello, welcome, good to meet everyone. Good morning.
Abraham. Good morning, I'm Indira Alvarez, I'm here with Abraham Alvarez. And we were hoping for our architect to be here with us today, and he had a personal and medical emergency. We did go through the community process, and we went through the process that we're supposed to, to make it thus far, but we unfortunately will not be able to answer, if you had any specific questions, because we're not architects. But we were hoping to see, I don't know, I should know the process, but I, I don't, no, because I haven't been I S D for so long, but would like to postpone for, for another day that our architect could be here to answer questions, but we did go through all the necessary process and got approval from the community and what have you.
I understood, so do you want to proceed, or do you want us to defer to a later date?
If we're allowed to proceed, I would like to proceed, but I was given, for that I, I wouldn't be able to answer specific-
Right, you can proceed, but knowing, if you cannot answer those questions, then that just may be challenging for you. So it's up to you.
I'll, I'll proceed, because we've, we've been going through this. We were hired as the, as the general contractor, so, and I'm a little bit nervous, but-
No, no worries, so please refer to proceed.
Hello, I'm the gentleman.
And just walk us through the plans, if, you know, you have, you'll go.
So then I will have, and Abraham, who's also on-
Right on the Park Street.
Abraham, which is of a new, sorry. So right now, the property is located, as seen at 72 Buttonwood, it is on the corner lot, is currently a two-family property. And the owner is proposing to add a one-bedroom apartment, is very close to the train station and what have you, there won't be necessarily any parking in the location, and there are currently, we're looking for variance on four different areas, the building size, the open, open space size, the side yard and backyard, we currently don't have the necessary requirements, and we're hoping to get variance on this. I am, not necessarily, we went through the community process, Cormac Civic Association, and we had support from, was approached through the community process. There were some concerns about parking or traffic, and we had mentioned that there would be no parking, but that we're close to the train station, and you don't make the necessary changes, that there would need to do any changes, but it is a very small property, and she just wanted it to go on to a larger one, I'm mutually the background person, and that's why I'm nervous, but as you, I'm looking at the, it is, it's not attached, and I am going to ask the contractor, the licensed contractor who's on, Abraham, if you wanted to explain the, the plans, if you could hear me, I hope you could hear me, because I see him. Really sorry about the mess.
Yes. Hello? Yeah, sorry. The, the, the plan is pretty straightforward. We, we're doing an addition, it's right now a two-family, one, one apartment in the fourth floor, and another apartment in the second floor. We're doing an addition in the back, full level. This, in the fourth floor, it's going to be a kitchen slash living room, a bathroom, half bathroom, on the second floor, it's going to be one bedroom. The, we won't change the elevation, because we, the house in front, and where we, where we added, it's going to be consistent with the architectural existing building. The only thing is the violation that we have, that's what we're coming to at the first step here, it's just, and the back's supposed to be, I think it's 50 feet, and now we have 10 feet. And the side yard, we got required 10 feet, and we got 10, we got 10 feet, we got 12 feet. Oh, 12.
Are there questions from the board?
Yes, the open space requires-
Yes.
...control.
Sorry, I just asked if there were questions from the board? Okay. Okay, hearing none, can I have public test, I'm sorry, Mr. Stembridge?
What type of utility do you got? Is there a basement, a residential basement space, or how will utilities get into the , into the addition?
Well, the, the utility is going to be added to the existing utility that we have, extend it from the existing utility that we have. Just, just the special system is going to be added. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding 72 Buttonwood. Our office differs with the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting held on 2/10/25, attended by three community members. The feedback from this meeting was some concerns about how the proposal will impact the existing traffic problem and the neighborhood density as well. Additionally, we did not receive any letters of support or opposition regarding the proposal, and it was also reviewed by the McCormick Civic Association on 6/11/25. At this point, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus in Councilor's office. I'd like to go on record to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't have additional comments.
For that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, before we proceed, it is 11 o'clock. So we will ask at this time if there are any requests for withdrawal or deferral from the 11 o'clock AM hour.
Can I, can I speak on a deferral?
Yes, what, can you give the address?
Sure. 571B Washington Street. It's number 1725055. Here on behalf of Rebecca Rudenberg, and we'd like to defer to the next meeting.
Okay, so what we're talking about is case BOA 1725055 with the address of 571B Washington Street. Could you go ahead and explain what?
We're just asking to defer to the next meeting.
For what reason? Can you...
We have to go expansive in operations. We have to get that approval from the cannabis board. And rather than have two meetings and waste your time, one, two different meetings, we can just accomplish it all at the next meeting. If that's, if that would be the preferred way of doing it.
Stephanie, what's available?
How long do they take? Because we have August 26th, we can do October 7th or October 28th?
I think August 26th should be fine.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to, I mean, August 26th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Are there any more requests for withdrawal or deferral?
33 Crescent Ave, Mr. Secretary.
I'm sorry, what was the address?
33 Crescent Ave.
There wasn't, uh, that, so that would be for case BOA 1613738, the address of 33 Crescent Ave. Could you go ahead and explain what?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is G X Christopher of 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Walls Road in Marangtree. We're requesting a brief deferral so that we may go back and regroup with the butters. We'd like to provide some more letters of support and direct of butters support to the Board of Appeals. We request a very brief deferral so that we may do that and be back for you.
Stephanie? You want September 23rd, October 7th, or October 28th?
September 23rd is perfect.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer until September 23rd?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Peter.
So once again, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from 11, 11 AM plus. Hearing none, we'll go back to 9:30. The next case on the list has been deferred. So that will take us to case BOA 1721513 with the address of 756 to 762 Adams Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spence with Adams &amp; Maranti. Business address of 168 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. I'm here on behalf of the owner, M&amp;K Restaurant Group LLC, doing business at Blasi's Restaurant. The proposal in front of us today is seeking to add live entertainment after 10:30 to its current occupancy. This restaurant has been a staple in the Adams Village neighborhood of Dorchester for many years. The owner has been pulling one-day entertainment license with the licensing board for live entertainment after 10:30 PM for almost two years with no issues with the city of Boston. In fact, the operator has a stellar reputation within this community. The live entertainment after 10:30 PM is a forbidden use in this sub-district, but will not be any different from any of the other restaurants' live entertainment in the neighborhood. And that's, that's really this simple proposal that we have in front of us. I'm gonna turn it over. Nothing else in the operations is changing in this business. I'm gonna turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 756 to 762 Adams Street, our office differs with the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting on 6/4/25. That was not attended by any constituents. The feedback from this meeting was minor, and the proposal was connected with the local civic association. And they did receive full support regarding the proposal after some collaboration on the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus in Councilor's office. I would like to go on record to support this proposal. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Anthony Gilardi.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anthony Gilardi from City Council, Aaron Murphy's office. The council would like to go on record in support of the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without, we don't have additional comments at the moment.
Okay, without, may I have a motion? Madam Chair, part of motion of approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1699703 with the address of 1700 Dorchester Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board? Do I have a...
Ms. Zeus, anybody's hands on this?
No, be...
1700 Dorchester Ave? Okay, moving on.
We'll return to that. With that, we'll go on to case BOA 1700951 with the address of 94 Lyle Church. The applicant and/or their representative are present in this case. Could you explain?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ivan Hernandez. I'm at 111 Baker Street in West Roxbury. This proposal is for a single-story addition at the rear of an existing single-family residence in West Roxbury. Proposal is pretty straightforward. It's, if we move over to the, how long the plans there? You have existing conditions on A4 here, which shows the first floor of the, the single-family with a, an existing deck on the rear of the house. And that would be the location of the proposed addition. If we move on to the proposed floor plans, that's actually the second upper level. Those are existing elevations. If you continue to the couple more pages, that's actually proposed foundation. And this is the proposed floor plan right there on that sheet. Thank you very much. As I said, the proposal is for a rear addition to the existing first floor, single-story. It consists of 675 square feet of area being added. And we're proposing the building or the addition to be a 13-foot, 10 inches in height. It would be, remain a single-family residence, and pretty much no, no change as far as that. We have a couple of violations, rear VR setback, and side yard setbacks violations, which we would like to get approval from the board. I wouldn't add up to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on May 21st of this year, at which no concerns were raised. Petitioner presented to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted to support this application. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests?
We don't have additional comments for this project.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, we have a chair for 700 Dorchester Avenue. I think she's the owner of the case that was passed.
Well, we're, go ahead, Mr. Stenbridge. If you want to keep going forward or circle back?
Let's go forward and we'll circle back, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Next, we have case BOA 1703386 with the address of 26 North Crescent Circuit. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Hello, I'm a representative for 26 Crescent Circuit, and we would like to have a deferral of the dates in the future, because we do need to have more clarified with the documents.
So you're seeking a deferral now?
That's correct.
Stephanie?
September 23rd, October 7th, or October 28th?
October 7th would be a good time. Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Defer to, motion to defer this case until October 7th?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner? Okay, sorry about that. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
So now we will return to the case for 1700 Dorchester Ave, which is case BOA 1699703, again, the address of 1700 Dorchester Ave. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would you please explain?
To, this is your turn, this is your case.
She's on mute now. Can the applicant for 1700 Dorchester, yes? Can you unmute yourself and...
Yes, you have me?
Now we can, yes.
Yes, my name is Chi Wu Jun, as a 1700 Dorchester Ave. The BAOA is 1699703. My purpose is for changing occupancy from office to rooftop. That will for the position of service area, seat rock, and wood panel to finish. I have done all the meeting and the better from the last few months.
I don't know if you're speaking or we can't hear you.
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Are there questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 1700 Dorchester Ave, our office differs with the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting on 4/30/25, and the proposal was also reviewed with the St. Mark's Area Civic Association. Their meeting was on 5/27/25. The association expressed support and has expressed that the applicant worked collaboratively with the association and provided an email detailing the support that was submitted to the board. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus in Councilor's office. I would like to go on record to support the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't, oh, we don't have additional comments.
Without, may I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
So with that, if that, we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for 11 AM. We'll ask again if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals, for, for, withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe. So we will move on to case BOA 1705492 with the address of 274 to 276 Sumner Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Dan Scali. I'm the homeowner. I live at 276 Sumner Street, Apartment 3, in East Boston. This proposal is to add a rooftop deck. We've worked with ISD hand-in-hand to address any concerns, including a gated lock, to only allow for top unit access from my unit. It's keeping in character with the neighborhood. There's several neighboring properties that also have roof decks. Happy to answer any questions that you have. And my contractor, DHI, is still here to answer questions.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 274 to 276 Sumner Street, our office differs with the board's judgment. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting held on 4/24/25, attended by one community member that was in full support and also expressed that all of the neighbors were also in full support of the proposal. It was also reviewed by the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association on 6/16/25. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Solene Delafont. I'm with Councilor Claude Zappala's office. The council would like to go on record in support. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
What was the motion of approval for this project?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
As we will.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1731977 with the address of 335 to 347 Harrison Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please respond?
Good morning, Secretary Stenbridge, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, attorney, representing the applicant before you this morning. With me is Jefferson Macklin, who is the manager and part owner of the establishment. This is an existing restaurant in the South End in the Ink Block neighborhood called Shore Lee. It's been open and operating since 2018 with no issues, violations or other such matters with the city agencies. The application is to allow live entertainment at this location in place of a series of one-time entertainment licenses, which the applicant has been granted over the last couple of years. Just to cite this for you, the restaurant is located on Harrison Avenue beneath the CVS in the Ink Block, which is a very large CVS operating, which provides a great buffer between the restaurant space and the other uses above in the building. So we've had, as I said, these one-day applications. We've had no complaints from the building or tenants. Run a very good restaurant. They run across the street, Bar Mitzahma. They run the Black Lamb in the South End, Fino Pizza in Brighton neighborhood, and no relation as well. They're very high-quality operators. We had an ONS abudders meeting on July 25th. We also met with the East Berkeley Neighborhood Association, and I'm informed there was a letter of support from that organization on file. We are happy, of course, to answer any of your questions that are here this morning. Thank you very much. And that's the only change, by the way, no other change to the operations, the hours or any subsequent capacity, et cetera, no changes.
Thank you. Can you just clarify, so the one-day licenses that you've received, what are the... What's the closing or the end time for that?
The licensee has a 2:00 AM closing hour for food and beverage. So any licenses that they were granted were given that same closing hour.
And is that what you're seeking now, live entertainment until 2:00 AM?
Yes, ma'am. The same, same as we've been utilizing under the one-days for, you know, as I said, probably the better part of a couple of years.
Are there questions from the board?
Just kind of clarifications. It seems like the BPD would like a survey plot plan, but I'm not sure if I understood that correctly because it was noted that they would like a revised site plan to be submitted to BPD. So perhaps if Jeff can clarify.
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hanson, City of Boston Planning Department. Unfortunately, I don't even think they needed to be here. This is part of the PDA in the South End, specifically PDA number 98. This use is allowed. So what they're probably going to have to do is just submit a new plot plan, I mean, what's there already, so that we can stamp it, just so that it's consistent with the PDA. Attorney Quilty will probably get a letter from ISD, you know, more information requested letter, because it isn't a PDA. They will just have to stamp it. We have a stamp that will state that it's consistent with PDA. So that'll probably have to happen. Unfortunately, they probably, you know, had a few months where they didn't have to be here, to be honest with you. And if I could, Madam Chair, the same thing is happening with the next case at 47 Jersey Street. It is also part of the PDA. It's part of the Fenway Corneers West PDA, where, again, they didn't have to come before this board. It's in a lot of use under the development plan. So they'll have to go through the same process through ISD for more information letter. We'll stamp the site plan and they'll get their permits. But both these cases shouldn't have been here. They weren't allowed.
Right, so then we don't need to put a motion forward, but a...
I think it would, just because they're here.
Okay.
I wouldn't want them to withdraw their petitions because they've got the time. You can just say, you know, they submitted a site plan for a certificate of consistency through the BPD.
We're happy to do that. If the board wanted to make a proviso or whichever way you'd like, we'll be happy to do that immediately.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 335 to 347 Harrison Ave., our office differs with the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abudders meeting on 6/25/25, that was attended by two community members, where some concerns about the use of the public space in the building were raised, but after answering the constituents' questions, all concerns were spaged. The proposal was also reviewed by the East Berkeley Street Neighborhood Association, and they have expressed support regarding this proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much, Councilor Tills' office. Our office would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Excellent. Madam Chair, we don't have additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval for the proviso that the applicant puts forth a plot plan, a site plan, to be submitted to BPD so that they can issue the certificate of consistency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
As we will.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1709303 with the address of 47 Jersey Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please further explain? 47 Jersey Street? Shall we return to this?
One second, yeah, one second. Let me see if the person is here.
Hello?
Hello, I just... Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Are you the applicant for 47 Jersey? I don't think that's the applicant.
I don't think it's the applicant.
Okay, so let's keep going.
Hello? Hello?
Are you the applicant for 47 Jersey?
I'm the owner. I'm not the applicant.
Well, are you presenting?
I'll have to present because the owner was rushed, is in the hospital. I'm the... I'm sorry, the applicant is in the hospital right now, and I wasn't prepared for this, but I'm here right now, and...
You can just quickly walk us through it, just state your name and address for the record and what you're proposing.
Yeah, my name is Robert DiAngelo. It's 47 Jersey Street. We've been the owner of this property for over 50 years, and during ballgames, the applicant sets up a lot location. I think the previous man was talking about it's a PDA, and I don't know if we have to be here for this meeting, but again, I'm just thrown in the middle here because the applicant's in the hospital right now. I don't know if we had a lawyer being present for this or not, so this kind of hit me off guard. But it's our property. We own, we own from Van Ness to Brookline Avenue on Jersey Street. Name of the company is Twins Enterprise. And again, my name is Robert DiAngelo. We've been owners there for over 50 years.
And what is he proposing briefly?
He's just proposing... He's just proposing picnic tables in our loading dock. Again, I think it's a formality, but again, this is not my job to judge. But again, I think that this with a PDA, I think it's approved already. But again, I haven't been able to speak to already the applicant because, again, he's rushed to the hospital.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what else to tell you. I didn't know if I should have, I should have presented a deferral, but because I thought it was a PDA, this was just a formality.
Let's just move forward. We'll just move forward. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. This application is consistent with the applicant's longstanding use of this location as a concessionaire, and our office is unaware of any community concerns in light of operator's long history as a good operator ONS, which is to express our support for this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't have additional comments.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
As we will.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We've reached the 11:30 hour, so at this point, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 hour. Hearing none, we'll return to the 11:00 AM cases and go to case BOA 1709380. If the address was six Gifford Place, if the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please respond?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the applicant, Anthony Monahan, and the project architect, Eric Zabrison. This is a proposal to combine two lots, change occupancy from three to four residential units by way of an addition. One lot contains an existing three-family, and the other lot is a vacant that will contain the ground floor garage. This proposal falls within a multifamily residential sub-district. The new lot will consist of approximately 2,962 square feet. Property is located three blocks away from Andrew Square train station. The lot will require relief for insufficient additional lot area as the code requires 5,000 square feet. However, this proposed lot area is consistent with the neighborhood's character, that there are many other properties in this area with similar lots that surpass those lot requirements. Further, the erection of a multifamily dwelling is in line with the planning goals of 2030 while increasing the city's housing stock along areas serviced by transit. If I can direct your attention, Madam Ambassador, to page A101. The existing structure will now contain unit number one, which will consist of a three-bedroom. Basement will contain an office space, a bonus room, and again, an office. First floor will contain a living room and a kitchen. Second floor will contain two bedrooms, bathroom and a laundry room. Third floor will contain the master bedroom and bathroom. Ground floor of the addition will consist of parking for three vehicles, full-size spaces. Level two and level three will consist of three bi-level, three-bedroom units. We have additional violations from the floor ratio. We're proposing a 2.13 and a 2.0 is compliant. The proposed density aligns with the goals outlined in the planning context of allowing more density within transient-oriented neighborhoods. Front yard violation, side yard violation, rear yard violation as well. The minimum front yard is five feet. Minimum rear yard is 15 feet under the shallow lot exception to the code, and the minimum side yard is three feet. The current front yard is three feet, and this would extend that violation to the addition. The current side yard on eight different places, one feet, 4.5 inches. The rear yard is five feet, again, but these conditions are very similar to the surrounding context. We have an insufficient parking. Code requires 1.5 parking spaces per new unit, and this proposal calls for three total ground floor spaces, which is in line with the initiative reducing dependency on private vehicles. We have an open space violation. Code requires 800 square feet of open space, and this proposal calls for a total of 111 square feet, including the mayor's initiative increasing the housing stock as to provide more dense projects within transit neighborhoods. And we are three blocks away from Andrew Square train station. In fact, there have been many other recently approved dense projects in this quarter approved by this board. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abudders meeting on May 19th, at which there were questions about a right-of-way located on the property and about snow removal, though opposition was stated. Andrew Square Civic Association is the active civic group in this area, and they're in support of this application. Our office has received a lot of support from abudders that have been forwarded to the board. With that background, our office defers to the board for their judgment. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Council of Flea would like to go on record and support based on a good community process and unanimous support from the Andrew Square Civic Association. Neighbors cited good faith, compromises with the team, and work to preserve the character of the community. Council of Flea respectfully request that they propose and continue to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think there is one person who has... Was recently... Yes, Ian CCO. You can speak now.
Thank you. This is Patty McCormick, resident of seven Gifford Place and Andrew Square, and I'd like to support the project wholeheartedly. The developers and their team work closely with Director Butters, which I am one, and our neighbors to come up with a plan that is agreeable, complements the character of this small private way, while adding three additional housing units to the seven buildings that make up Gifford Place. Neighbors are also appreciative that the developers will be paving the street as part of the project. I also serve as vice president for Andrew Square Civic Association, and our members voted unanimously at our June meeting in support of this project and applaud the developers for their willingness to work with the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without no additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
As we will.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 1730322 with the address of 156 to 162 Bruegel Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please respond to
Do we have any raised hands from 156 to 160? We will. Okay.
Shall we return, Madam Chair, to those?
That was good.
And with that, we will skip the next two cases, which have been deferred, which will take us to case BOA 1730351 with the address of 14 Cheryl Lane. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please respond to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Plugini here on behalf of the homeowners, Egeria and Matthew Smith, relating to 14 Cheryl Lane in Hyde Park. The zoning in this neighborhood is single-family, 9,000. This lot size is 7,380 square feet. The proposal before you is a modest one. Egeria and Matt are seeking to add an approximate 576-square-foot addition to the rear of the home, which will convert the home from a single to a two-family. The reason for this proposal is to create enough room to allow Egeria's parents to move into their home and have their own space. Currently, they are living in the basement. These... This couple has a young child, toddler, and also another baby due on the way, and they are both working remotely. The plan was to initially have this space designated as an ADU, but as the proposal involves expanding the footprint of the building, that update to the ADU policy has not come to Hyde Park yet, although it has gone to other neighborhoods. Therefore, they were forced to go the standard route of zoning to convert to a two-family. The addition will be located to the right rear of the house, and it will be approximately 576 square feet. It'll have a bedroom, a living room, kitchen and bathroom. If you look at the violations... kitchen and bathroom. If you look at the violations, we have one. It's the location of the main entrance of this doesn't face the front lot line. Use is a 2F in a single-family zoning sub-district. I will point out that there are many twos in this neighborhood. And again, looking at this proposal, and Ms. Better Brazza, as an architect, would understand this, it presents as a single-family. This would never be sold as a two-family home. FAR .3 is allowed. We are a .32. Side yard is 10. We have a pre-existing 9.2 on one side. Rear yard is 40 and we're at 5.9. However, we have no rear butters. It is DCR land. This went through a full community process, and at the butters meeting, the direct neighbors shared their support. Also have unanimous support from Hyde Park Neighborhood Association and the support of Consulor Peppin, and we've also provided the board with written support from the two butters, who are the only ones that could possibly be impacted by this proposal. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had gone record in support of this proposal. Some background information, the community process, as you heard me conducting a butters meeting on June 10th, there was only one abutter present who raised no concerns. The applicant went on to meet with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, which was supportive of this proposal. We received two additional letters in support from the butters, as well as a letter from Consulor Peppin, also indicating support as well. We're unaware of any concerns. So with that, we're in support of this project. Thank you.
You?
Without no additional comments.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
I don't think so.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have two companion cases, first being case BOA 1735554 with the address of 71 Davidson Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1735552 with the address of 88 Pierce Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain the cases to the board?
Yes. Hi, good morning, Madam Board and members of the board. My name is Shabnam Marsasami. Address of 40 Salem Street, Springfield, Mass. 01940, the attorney representing the owner of 71 Davidson Street LLC. This project consists of subdividing one parcel. The current parcel consists of 8,832 square feet. The existing two-family structure will remain, and that lot size would be about 4,249 square feet. The remaining lot will be about 4,583 square feet, and we plan to elect a two-family. I have with me the project architect Jennifer Ha, who will run through the violations and the plans with you all. As you'll see, the home, the new home will fit well with existing homes in the neighborhood, and as an appropriate use of the lot, it may not address to affect the community or be in the neighborhood for any abutter presence. Jen, are you on?
Hi, yes. Hello, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Jennifer Ha. The principal architect at Hugh Architecture, located at Harvard Street in Dorchester. I'll be presenting the project at 88 Pierce and 71 Davidson. The proposal, as what Shabnam Ha explained, is to subdivide an existing lot and to build a new two-family dwelling on the new subdivided lot. The existing lot currently hosts a two-family that's facing 71 Davidson. It is 8,832 square feet and measures 205 feet by 42 feet. Because the lot is very long and extends to Pierce Street to its rear, we wish to divide the lot roughly in half and address the new lot as 88 Pierce Street. The proposed parcel will be 4,248 square feet, and the other will be 4,583 square feet, which matches the 4,000 to 5,000 square feet neighboring parcels that make up this block. The project is in a 2F 5,000 zone. The houses on this block is comprised of both single families and two-families. Therefore, we feel the proposed two-family will fit well in this context. Next slide, please. Thank you. So each unit of the two-family will be three bedrooms and three bathrooms, averaging 1,800 square feet per unit. This is the plan for the basement and the first floor, and so the basement and first floor make up unit one. You can see it's an open kitchen dining layout with a big rear deck in the back with the second means egress coming from the rear deck. You can see the next slide, please. This is the other unit, which comprises of the second floor and the attic space. They also have a second floor deck, which has the secondary egress from the rear deck as well. The plans are quite similar. It's still three bedrooms and three bathrooms. Next. So we have designed a traditional gabled facade with dormers to resemble the neighboring two-and-a-half-story dwellings on the street. We also designed front porches and front yard landscaping and private decks to offer a more attractive, desirable neighborhood appeal. You can go to the next. And here is the images of Pierce Street, so that you can see it's a vacant lot currently. There are two families, a body left, two families and single families, a body left and right in the parcel, and we will be creating a new curb cut in front of 88 Pierce. Next slide, please. This is the rear elevation. You can see the rear deck photo will be facing the new, sorry, the old building at 71 Davidson, which is the blue building on the lower-left picture. So they also have rear deck on their side. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had to go on record in support of this proposal. Some background information, the community process. ONS had conducted a butters meeting on April 10th, in which one abutter was in attendance. A few inquiries were made, which was addressed by the applicant. Next, the applicant went on to meet with the Hyde Park Central River Neighborhood Group, which voted to support the proposal. Our offices also received a petition from the applicant with 48 signatures in support. Majority of those signatures come from both Davidson Street as well as Pierce Street. With that, we'll support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, have additional interest for this project?
Great. May I have a motion? A motion to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will return and ask about case BOA 1730722 with the address of 156 to 162 Blue Hill Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Luis Centeno with HES Construction and Consulting Services in Boston. And this is a proposal to add eight additional dwelling units to an existing, well-storyed, commercial building. The violations, as you can see from the letter, Article 9, Section 2, which is questionable in my opinion because we are maintaining the existing, well-conform uses on the first floor, so there is no change to that. And the permitted uses, residential or presidential units are permitted uses. Nevertheless, it was silent and clear what relief is needed for that. The other violations, lawn area, we are just shy of 7,000 square feet by combining those three lots. It's a relatively large lot, but yet we are shy from the additional lawn area for additional dwelling units. We are going from a FAR of required 1 to 1.78, which requires volumes. And the office street parking, also side yard, which in this particular case, the building is attached to a three-story building on the right-hand side, and it's a corner lot, so the left side doesn't have any buildings. We also need relief from the office street parking. As you're going to see from the boards, we did provide some spaces in order to alleviate the need for it. Next slide, please. So this page covers the relief as well, and the chart with the residential requirements and use regulations. Again, this is an MFR, this MFR NS is called Commercial and Residential. Presidential uses are permitted on the second stories above, and the existing uses will remain with no change. Next slide, please. These are the existing parcels. There are three parcels, two of them facing Blue Hill Avenue. They're all combined in the past, and there were buildings as well. And there is a real lot on Julian Street, which is not occupied by anything other than existing pave area for parking for the owners of the building. And this part shows the proposed addition. As you can see, the two stories will be added to the footprint of the building. We will not be projecting beyond the problem, and the exception of some bay windows on the front inside, which meet the requirements for projections over the whole building. And parking will be added. The two spaces on the top-left corner will be reserved for the owners, husband and wife, which they spent significantly time on the day at the premises. And the other five spaces, which are designed as compact spaces, eight by 18, will be dedicated for some of the 18 units. Next slide, please. Again, that is the existing layout of the building, of course. Existing architectural portion in the two spaces in the rear and the paved area as well. Basement, which will not be doing any changes to it. It will remain for storage. Existing first floor, as you can see, there are three spaces, but all that function as one business. You have a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant, a takeout, and entertainment, a function room on the right-hand side, although it's labeled as retail, it's carried over from the previous one. But all that operates as a single business. Plus existing elevation, one story, rear and front. Our site on the street, on Julian Street, intersection. This is the layout for the parking and proposed improvements. Next slide, please. Existing basement, again, no change. Proposed first floor plan, as you can see, in the middle of the building, there is a new entrance, and that will be the entrance to the residential units above. That will be the only change to the existing first floor, in addition, obviously, to some structural accommodations for the open stores. And this is the first, second and third floor. Those are spacious units, one and two bedrooms. Again, that will be layout of the existing footprint of the building. On the right-hand side, there is a three-story building, so that is a body wall deck wall. And on the left-hand side, there is Julian Street, which is again a open door. First and second floor is an identical mirror image, so there are four units and four units on each story. And this is the roof plan, which only will contain the stair head house or maintenance. This is a proposed elevation. As you can see, it will remain within the existing footprint, but that will be the Blue Hill elevation. That is the rear elevation, where the parking area is. And that is the side on Julian Street. The other side elevation is basically a bi-wall, so there are no windows or openings on that floor. On the section. Basically, just to give you a little bit of background on this, the owner, he's a, he has been at this location for over 30 years. He has built a solid reputation as a business owner, a responsible landlord as well. And he's done a great job for the community, with other businesses that he runs. The relief that we're looking for is consistent with the zoning guidelines. It's an area of medium density, which allows for residential uses. We will not be exceeding the existing footprint of the building, except for the bay windows as previously noted. And this project is subject to the IDP, it is a developer policy as well, so a percentage of these units will be dedicated for affordable housing as acquired by the law. Also, again, the area, there are unmaintained commercial buildings in the area, and this area begs for renovation. So I think this would be a great improvement for the growth and development of this area. There are vacant lots, and again, unmaintained commercial properties in the area. So I think that this would be a great addition to the neighborhood.
With that, I'm sorry. Sorry, I was just going to start asking questions. Are you?
That's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Can you confirm how many affordable units you're including in your project, since you mentioned the IDP units?
I believe this is Zone C for the Foxbury neighborhood district, and 17% will be required based on rental units, which is the intent. So that translates into 1.36 unit, I believe. Definitely, one will be affordable. The other fraction will be decided on this agreement documentation to be declared, whether it's a partial payment or not.
Questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. How many bedrooms will the apartments contain?
How many bedrooms, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
There will be units with one bedroom. I believe split, if I'm not mistaken, four one-bedrooms and four two-bedrooms.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted and a butters meeting on March 11th, at which two butters were opposed due to a lack of parking. We understand that the petitioner subsequently made some changes prior to a presentation on April 14th at the Nine Streets United Civic Association, which voted to support the proposal. At the butters meeting, there was also a concern raised about whether the project would include affordable units. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, no additional comments.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the project undergoes. BPD, design review, paying special attention to the site planning, to review the parking and the overhead along the public way.
And do we need a proviso for the IDP, for an IDP unit?
If it's required, they have to submit.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, move on to the 11:30 hearing, which is case BOA 1575425 with the address of 62 L Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is David Luciano. I'm the applicant and homeowner of 62 L Street, a three-family home in South I'm the applicant and homeowner of 62 L Street, a three-family home in South Boston. Our proposal is to rebuild an existing exterior rear staircase and construct a new roof deck seeking variances for insufficient side over yards for the staircase and a variance for access to the roof deck not being via a roof patch as required by codes. Um, we're actually seeking a deferral today following our recent third abutters meeting um, to finish working with our architect to provide an alternative solution to the roof deck, um, uh, to see if we can come to an amicable compromise with our most immediate abutters at 60 L Street.
Okay, Stephanie, do you have dates for that?
October 7th, February 28th.
Uh, the 28th would be great.
May I have a motion?
Motion to for October 28th?
May I have a second?
Second.
Back end. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barasa?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Next, we have a reconsideration hearing scheduled for 12 PM. This, this is case BOA 169 0706 with the address of 507 Mass- Massachusetts Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative present, please explain to the board. For someone to represent 507 Massachusetts Avenue.
I have some people, please, I send the invitation. Patricia, iPhone Francis, Armando Hernandez. If you are here for this project, please make sure to accept the invitation.
And Ms. Better Barasa, are you still recusing yourself from this?
Yes, I'm gonna recuse myself to this case. Thank you.
Thank you. We are a six-member board.
Hello, everyone.
Yes, are you the applicant?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Great. Can you introduce yourself and your, your address and now what are you here for?
Yeah, sure. I'm Adam, legal counsel, but I, I don't know where he is at, but I'll do it. My name is Armando Hernandez. I'm introducing 507 Massachusetts Avenue, Boston 02118. And we are proposing, uh, this is a lodging house and we're proposing increasing from seven lodging units to 10 lodging units. Uh, we came last time with, um, uh, like a month ago, uh, with, uh, with support, but like with, uh, with, um, oh, Joe, Joe with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I know, we end the name with U.
Yeah, sorry about that, but thank you for, uh, uh, the reconsideration here. I think it's self-explanatory. We had sent a letter, um, that I know the board has and is probably reviewed, um, that basically outlined a discrepancy on our part. Um, back in the hearing on June 3rd, uh, there was a question as to whether the space on the street level, this is a five-story brownstone that's been a lodging house for a number of years. My client bought it in 2023 and they've since renovated it. Lots of support in the community and we're just looking to convert the street level uh, into three additional lodging house, uh, units. It was most recently a, a one-bedroom with, uh, unit with some, uh, some dens, if you will, other bedrooms that didn't have windows. And it wasn't clear on June 3rd, we went through the VPDA recommendation as to whether, um, the, um, plan showed that as storage or as residential. And because we're in coastal flood resiliently overlay district, even though it's not subject to the scale of the project, um, the VPDA has a policy which we respect and wanted to work through of supporting only cases where it's a change from residential use. That, you know, mea culpa on the plans. We hired Guy Grassi, who is a very experienced architect and you'll see here in the plan right in front of you, who stamped and certified and wrote a letter to the board, uh, clarifying and certifying that, uh, the space on the street level, which is a little over 1,400 square feet, uh, is in fact residential and that is the change of use and occupancy, uh, that it is from. On the left, you will see, uh, a small basement unfinished area, which is storage. That remains a storage and is not part of this request. Uh, so it, uh, you know, as we outlined, we think it's appropriate for reconsideration. And I know at the last hearing, we had a full discussion of, um, the zoning issues as well. Um, but I believe it was, uh, remember Weewell that had suggested, uh, discrepancy about, uh, in the plans, which we've now corrected and would note that we have now a updated recommendation from the VPDA uh, in support of the case.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Okay, Karen Dunn, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion, please.
Just to clarify, it's a, it's a.
It's a for, it's to reconsider it, correct?
Yeah, so then, um, they'll present again, but it's just a motion to reconsider what they're asking.
It's a motion to reconsider.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Back end.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Great. Would you like me to present the merits now or?
I, I don't think so. Is that Caroline, aren't we just reconsidering it for another hearing or?
Yes, to reconsider for another hearing. We can even schedule that now.
Thank you, Caroline.
You?
Sorry about that. We'll obviously take the soonest available, so we appreciate the board, uh, working with us on this.
Stephanie, all right, do you have the dates?
Um, oh, September 23rd?
Yep, yeah, that's the soonest one. That would be great.
All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day.
You too.
Bye.